Call this, call the city council order Monday, December the eighth, two thousand and fourteen. Call the roll please.
Barfield.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Kurzine.
Present.
Daughtry.
Here.
McManus.
Here.
Midnight.
Here.
And Mizel.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and standing for prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly father, we come tonight thanking you for the many blessings that you've given each and every one. Be the ones, dear heavenly father, that occupy this table, dear heavenly father, in these chambers, that have illness, dear heavenly father, be with each and every one. We pray that you are the great divine, dear heavenly father, and you are a great healer. You know our needs, you know what we do, dear heavenly father, and we do know that prayer does happen and does help. Be with each and every one in our community, dear heavenly father, that have sickness. Not only be with the sick, but be with the caregivers. Be with this council, and each decision that we make here tonight will be for the betterment of the community. Be with our armed service personnel and audio on foreign grounds, but here in the United States, guide and direct their lives and bring them safely home to their families. We ask it in our precious name. Amen. Need a motion to approve the council meeting, eleven twenty-four fourteen.
So moved.
Second by Ms. Brown, second by Mr. Kurzine. Call the roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
First item on the agenda, citizens' request. We don't have any new people, just family, so. First item on the mayor's report, motion to accept application for payment number two for the Franklin Park pool improvements, the amount of twenty-five thousand, three forty, thirty. So move.
Second.
Move for Mr. Kurzine, second by Ms. Brown. Discussion, call the roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Mm-hmm.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Next item, motion to accept payment to Howcom Foundation Engineering Corporation in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents in regards to the Metropolis Park Pool Improvements. Motion made, second discussion. Call the roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item we put on here, this is pending, just like I'll read the motion. closure of Superman Square between the hours of ten-thirty PM and twelve AM on Wednesday, December the thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen, for the purpose of New Year's Eve performance by Morgan Stribbler. He is actually a gentleman that does magic acts, things of that. He was here during the Superman celebration. Did a tremendous job during the celebration. I mean, he's a very talented, professional young man that has done a lot of stuff in Vegas. Actually, he's here in Metropolis, has been here for, I know, a week or two, and he's on his way back to Vegas. And we're supposed to get proof of insurance and everything like that on Wednesday. I wanted this to be put on here where he can make his arrangements. It is pending that he get everything in to where corporate council can actually review the insurance policies and stuff like that to make sure that we are having protection. What he's actually going to do up here is at the Superman Square, they have a crane that actually, this young man will be starting on the ground tied by his feet in a straitjacket, and they'll elevate him fifty foot in the air, and he will escape out of the straitjacket. And this is a promotion that's going to go along with a fundraiser for the Friends of the Theater. So now you know just about as much about it as I do, so. And I won't be accompanying him up there, so.
You gonna drive a rig?
No, I'm not gonna drive the rig. Jan made it. Mr. Barfield, do you see the time of that?
It'd be just swinging.
Do you know I'm not gonna be up there?
Who will be?
We do need a motion, we have a motion by Mr. Kurzine.
I'll second, Mayor.
Second by Mr. Midnight.
But I do have a question.
All right.
This gentleman requested Sixth Street also be included. We did not include it in our motion. Is that on purpose, or did we oversight?
We have it oversight, we need to put that in there.
I'll so stipulate, and I will agree with it all.
For the person of New York, and that would be on the corner of Sixth and Market.
Mayor, on the insurance, how does that work?
I imagine it'll be like an event insurance or something like that, so.
That would extend to anything we have seen, is it?
Well, it would probably be a.
What we probably have to do is get a copy of this, run it past our carrier, okay? Make sure, our biggest issue would be, as long as, it'd be a little like the fireworks. Let's, as long as.
All right, helicopter ride, or maybe.
Well, if we sponsor it, yeah, and that's the other thing. We, there's a difference, we just allow somebody to use part of our streets versus if we sponsor it. If we sponsor it, then we get, then we actually have equal exposure. I don't think we're sponsoring this, hopefully we're not sponsoring this.
No, we're not.
But typically what we do is we have an inside agreement, which they agreed to indemnify us, and then they name us as co-insured, and we look at their general liability policy and see how much. In a case like this, I mean, if we don't supply the crane, we don't, always supplies the street, but we don't, you know, if he doesn't ask for a cushion down below or a net, I mean, that'd have to be up to him. Then, you know, he's gonna have to assume all the risk and stuff. And if we keep people away from it, then I think we're probably okay. Less exposing we would be with fireworks or something like that, so.
The information that he gave me, he does have staff, will furnish, of course, will service the barricades to mark off perimeter around there. He will have staff that actually are there to assist him, and he did tell me that they will tape off, you know, the area to make sure that no spectators are up and around and stuff like that. And this is something that, the way he explains it to me, is something that he does, I guess, all the time, you know, so.
He has a big show in Vegas.
Yeah.
And he travels in Europe also.
Yes, and he is actually making a, some kind of a documentary film type thing that if it proceeds, you know, the way he wants it to, I think he sells these things on the internet, and he actually has contacted the soccer association, the booster association, would like to make a contribution to the soccer association from the receipts that he gets off the film, even whatever what it is, so. Anyway, seemed like a very nice young man, and I did see some of the things he did uptown, and he is very impressive, you know, as far as what he does, so. We do have, we do have an old motion, who's the second, Mr. Midnight? Call the roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol, oops, sorry, Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, motion to accept funding of Superman Classic in the amount of ten thousand dollars. So move. Move by Mr. Kurzine, second by Ms. Brown. Call the roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, motion to accept appointment of Ken Kovacs, Denise Peoples, and Mike Cordy to the planning commission.
Make a motion, second.
Motion made, and second, call the roll.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yeah.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, motion to accept appointment of Ken Kovacs as chairman, Jen Broadway, and Keith Stowe to the zoning board of appeals.
Make a motion, second.
Motion made, and second, call the roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Kurzine.
No.
Daughtry. McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is just an update that actually comes out of Ms. Adams's office. We've, we have several calls and things like that, thought we would just put it out there in the public, make it available. Jan has advertised it and things of that nature, and maybe with our coverage from the Metropolis Planet, we can remind people that charge cards and things of that nature are available now in the clerk's office for payment of the utility bills. Do you think you want to add that, Jan?
They like it. They're using it a lot. Good. It makes the clerk easier. Makes it easier on you, doesn't it? It does for them, too.
Will we be charged a fee on the added transaction? We will not.
Next item, corporate counsel, Mr. Abel.
Yes, Mayor, the first item on the agenda we brought back, and technically what we needed, we need a motion to take that from the table, because we did table it last time, and then we could pick up the ordinance.
Now I'll make a motion to pick this up.
Motion made. Yes. Call the roll please.
I got a question. Has the committee taken this up and discussed it at all?
Yeah, several times over the last.
Over the last five years.
Over the last couple of years at least, yeah.
But I mean, since we tabled it.
We didn't, we didn't, the only reason it wasn't tabled was because.
We didn't have enough.
We didn't have enough people to vote on it. It takes a, seven, seven votes. We didn't have seven votes last time, so that's why it was tabled.
It wasn't tabled because of the disruption or questions. We just didn't have enough, Ms. Brown was absent, you were absent, Mr. Carroll was absent, so that kept us with not having a majority. We do have a motion, we do have a second. Call the roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make the motion that we adopt ordinance.
Thirty-nine.
Twenty-fourteen thirty-nine, as presented.
Second. We do have a motion, we do have a second, call the roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
Mizel.
Yes. Yes.
And the mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item, and Chad may have a comment on this, or if you've got questions, you can ask him. But essentially, we have been in the process of putting together an application for a new enterprise zone for the last eight months or so, and all of that has come to fruition, the applications. We've had our public hearings, we've, Chad has gone to the other taxing bodies and secured their support. Now, several of the taxing bodies that are not members of this, such as school district and others, are taking action, the hospital are taking action to support it by also occurring to abate taxes for various periods of time. But, and we even adopted at a previous meeting, the intergovernmental agreement between the four, the three municipalities and the county. Now, it's up to us to adopt an ordinance to designate this enterprise zone. And that's what the purpose is, we need to get this done this month, the sooner the better, because the applications have to be in by the thirtieth and Chad, or thirty-first. Chad didn't want to drive them up on New Year's or New Year's Eve or anything like that, so. We're probably gonna drive them anyway, just to make sure they all get filed properly, but that's, that's what this is. If you have questions, like I say, Chad's here, he'd be glad to tell you, he can answer more than I can about it.
I'd be glad to make a motion on this, Mayor.
So we, this would be a motion to suspend the rules and place this on track.
Made by Mr. Kurzine, second by Mr. McManus. Yes, call the roll.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Kurzine. Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, we adopt ordinance, two thousand fourteen forty, as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Kurzine, second by Mr. McManus. Call the roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, committee reports, finance committee.
Yes, sir, Mayor, these four items are from the meeting that was held last Friday, we see with the fifth. I will make the following motion, I will make a motion to accept the health insurance renewal with Mutual Medical to continue current stock loss level at fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second. Call the roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
A movement, we adopt the motion for the rules to be suspended and the ordinance, two thousand fourteen forty-one, be placed upon its passage, tax levy ordinance for fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. Mizel. Call the roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make the motion that we adopt the ordinance, two thousand fourteen forty-one, as presented, the tax levy ordinance for fiscal year beginning July the first, two thousand fourteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. Mizel. Or was it Mr. McManus? It was Mr. McManus. You can't tell what's the part anymore.
Way to go, twins.
The two disobedient children. Mr. Mizel, is all right to take your name off there, please?
Sure, yeah, all right, I'll be fine.
Call the roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Excuse me, Brown.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
I will make the motion to accept funding of the police pension in the amount of one hundred seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars, and the park pension in the amount of one hundred forty-nine thousand, sixty-nine dollars, for deficit and tax levy to be funded in equal summers over a period of seven months.
Second. Have we heard any more about, maybe, changing all of our. We've, I actually have called, haven't been, haven't had a call back, and we'll see what we can do with the, with our legislators and see if we can get somebody to sponsor that and get it in there. Now, it will happen real fast.
Oh, that was a sketch today.
And this will, this will take an effort, pretty much like we have to put together to put a board. Get the board, as you're passing. We're probably gonna spend quite a bit of money, but we'll have to lobby the right people. It will take way beyond our legislators to do this thing. Yeah, I mean, even if we spend as much as we do getting the board, in short, long term, we're gonna save on it, because we can't keep beating the general.
No, no.
Got a question, may I, may I explain the reason why we're doing it monthly? You know, Trish said to keep from having to expend the one hundred seventy-five plus the one forty-nine every one time.
And it makes it difficult from cash flow.
Cash flow for the treasurer.
Yeah, you don't wanna have to go cash CDs in an inopportune time, or cash in other investments at a, you know, to your time, so.
It'll give the treasurer and a little more flexibility to plan her payments out. And like I said, Mr. Abel said, you know, maybe cashing in a CD two months earlier or three months earlier, or whatever it is, it's a, it's a, just more of a maintenance type issue for the payments. We do have a motion, we do have a second, any discussion? Call the roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, that completes the finance report.
Department heads, Mr. Massey.
Nothing at this time.
Frank.
Nothing at this time.
Chief Morris.
Nothing here.
Madam Treasurer.
Nothing. Can I add something? I know I'm not a department head, but I've watched Trish, I live across the street from the police station, and Harry's guys, I've noticed him, like during the parade, how professional they are. And these guys really, really work hard, they come into work, there's no plan, everybody wants to talk about the police department, all they do, that's not so. These guys work hard, and they do a professional job. I said, nobody said they were perfect, 'cause they're human beings, we all make mistakes. But I appreciate the job y'all do, Harry, and your professionalism and your dedication to Metropolis. And you always try to go above and beyond, and it means a lot to me.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Very good.
Chad, do you have anything?
No, not at this time.
Other Chad, do you have anything? Old business.
One thing, have you heard anything on the three line housing?
Well, yes, we, we went, we actually went out for bids, rebids, I'm calling it rebids, so we don't confuse contractors, rebids. Last week, we, we sent it out to the plant, but I, I didn't get it there in time, I was kinda waiting to get a confirmation on about whether to go with a ninety-day or a hundred-and-twenty-day period. Hundred-and-twenty was fine, so we did. That makes sure we'll get more, like, a more response. Said that, so it's appearing in the plan at this week, next week, and the following week. Bids will come in in January, I believe there was a date in the notice. Eighteenth, okay. And given that, given the, then letting a contract, getting it started, we should easily get some pretty good bids. I know that Chad's firm, HMG, they posted it on the two websites. I've actually heard from one of the operators of one of the websites, they're getting some calls and contacts, and she wanted me to keep her updated on the names of the contractors that actually got plans for this. I've had one email from Everard Strang, which is our contractor on the pool, they definitely indicated they were going to get in on it this time. I talked both of our local contractors, the one that didn't fully bid last time, the one that did, both have expressed an interest in coming back and rebid. So I feel pretty good that we'll get some bids this time.
You already had several pickpockets.
I actually had Mr. Jones picked one up and came in and talked to us last week. Mr. Jones actually did some of the demolition, we were cleaning the riverfront and stuff like that, so I know he picked one up, so.
Will Mr. Quinn have to bid again?
Yes.
So he, we just don't hold his open?
No, we've already, we've already turned his stuff back to him, and we did, and we did not, we just got rid of his, and.
But he doesn't understand that he has to resubmit.
Yes, yes, yes.
And his bid bonds were given back to him, he'll do a new bid bond.
Okay, yeah, yes, he does.
Anything else on old business? New business?
I have one item, Mayor, the top of the city, the tourism commission will meet here tomorrow at eleven o'clock in these chambers.
Eleven o'clock tomorrow.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay, then I'll start going.
Anything else on new business? Mislanious reports. We had a very cold Christmas parade for the weather and stuff like that. I thought it was a very good turnout, we had forty-two to forty-three entries.
Forty-eight.
How many?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, okay. So that's, you know, that's, that's a nice turnout for our community and stuff like that. The, I know the Kiwanis Pancake breakfast was, I think, very successful, they, a lot of people there between six-thirty and ten-thirty, so. The craft show, I think, had a good crowd, you know, everybody seemed like they enjoyed all of it, so. Finance reports, payment of salary, payroll, and contract bills.
I'll make that a motion, Mayor.
Call the roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Payment of miscellaneous bills. I'll make that a motion as well. Second. Call the roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughtry. McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
You had a, you sure, last call?
Not really, but I'm going to, yeah, I'm not gonna have one.
Where you want, rest, or you gonna chew off a little bit, or? That's an inside joke.
Just a frustrating day with our.
Was it really?
Work, no, just been a frustration.
I'm obsessed with, we wait for a couple, you know, until next meeting, then we'll break it up again, you know, have time to kinda, as, as most of you, we are happy to have Kim back tonight. Mr. Carroll is doing well, he's just chomping at the bits, he just can't hardly stand it, but he has had the, told the replacement, he is doing well, you know, and, but I think he, he was, he was kinda talking about coming, and he just really doesn't, he's, he's doing really good, and he just does not want to take the chance of maybe getting in a vehicle, out of vehicle, whatever, and maybe bump, twist, whatever, maybe, and disturb something that, he certainly doesn't want to go through it again, I'll put it that way. So maybe by the next city council meeting, maybe we'll have our full council back in order. We, we are going to, as soon as we find out something from HMG on the visiting the water filtration plant, And, and we, I've talked to Mr. Barfield as the chair of the Water Light and Street Committee. Don't know exactly how we're going to address it. We may address it, first of all, with John, and maybe one or two, and maybe we need to find out from legal counsel. But I'll let you know if we can just visit and walk through and then bring something back to the total committee and get a view of what we need to do and, and things like that. But that needs to be done sooner than later.
Right.
And I don't know if you got back...
Yeah, you got your calendar? Can I see that? The sixteenth or the eighteenth are pretty good, they said.
Yeah, I got that, and I, I'll let it up to you.
Okay, right. Do you all have a preference from the sixteenth and the eighteenth?
Seventeenth I had something, I don't remember.
That's when Honeywell is coming.
Honeywell's coming, yes. Is it going to be afternoon? We're having, I know we got, I know we've got something on the...
We do, yeah, we do afternoon.
Yeah, we'd rather do it... Yeah, okay. The eighteenth will be fine.
Okay. Mr. Barfield got a preference?
Eighteenth, yes.
Which one?
Eighteenth will be fine, just, I'll make myself able.
For, for the committee meeting or the...
Well, the committee meeting for sure.
Yeah. How many, how many, just for an idea, of the, the setting council, how many are interested? And I know you're all interested now. How many feel like you want to go for a walkthrough of that facility? Now, there is a lot of stairs. If we have it in the afternoon. We could actually, the way we have done it before, it would, is actually call a committee meeting and then adjourn to there, or as long as there's not...
Yeah, just recess to there. Recce, or, or call it a committee meeting and just go there. I mean, put it on there, that we'll, we're going to visit the water filtration plant for however long it takes.
Let me ask you this.
In return.
Let me ask you this. In the worst case scenario, so we call it a committee meeting, and there's not the two people show up.
Yeah, you got to have, you got to have committee people here.
I've thought all this out, I'm trying to make this as difficult as I can.
You're doing a fine job.
You're playing stump the band tonight.
Well, that's the reason, would there be anything wrong, would there be anything wrong with, as long as there's not any decisions made, no motions, no expenditures? If you took a walkthrough of the people that, that, for whatever reason, feel like they want to go...
Couldn't we, couldn't we make this a joint committee meeting? Because you're not going to have court.
No.
I mean, Bill's not going to be able to make it.
Kim won't be able to hide his stickers.
No, Mr. Barfield...
Charlie won't be able to. As I'm saying, can you make it a joint?
And, and he's the only one on the committee that I know...
You'll get enough of us here to make the court.
Has anybody got an issue with, with that and then bring it back with John to a full committee?
Yeah, that's better.
And then we'll go over everything that, that John proposed, what he's seeing. Because we probably even need to go one step further than that. There's a couple of water filtrations plants within the area, driving distance that we can get up in the morning. And we'll drive to it and, and, and visit, see what they've got to offer, and then bring it back. But we do, we definitely need to do that if we can, start it this month.
Daughery wants to know if he has to bring his own lunch to that one?
Who? Yeah, it's a bag lunch. I might pitch you a bag lunch. We go by the side. They got them brown bag lunch. So is that acceptable to, to commit to the council?
Are you going to have to call a special meeting?
That's not going to happen. He's too tight, I didn't know it.
He's too hoarse to Christmas.
Well, I thought he'd surely jump on that one.
That would make me nervous, we wouldn't have a court.
That's right, so.
So let's do it that way, we'll get, hold to John, let him come down, and we'll just decide a time. I'll let all of, I'll just call everybody, and right now, it looks like we might have released a couple of whatever. And we'll just, we're not going to make any decisions, we're just going to walk through and look at it and let John look and see what it is with JK and stuff like that. And then if we can, maybe within just a few days, if we hit someplace else and look. And I think John, according, Rick's actually talked to him more than I have. But I think, I think he has a fair idea right now of some recommendations that he, he can actually make. But really, we need to make some preparations and, and do some adjustments over there. We really, really need to get rid of that overtime that we're having over there right now. We need that badly and we can afford, with what we're paying in the overtime expenses, we can afford to make some adjustments. It's, it's going to be a, a large savings on the bottom end of this thing. So it's just something we're probably going to have to do.
Since, right, in my conversations with John and I think Jesse, because Jesse was down too from Murfreesboro. They're on their environmental side, which is water and your sewer side. They've been through, they've noticed some things. And obviously, we've talked to Water Light and Street about some things, major maintenance issues. And before we just jump off into some major maintenance issues, John felt like it'd be a good idea to get everybody sort of, if they let JK participate and get us all acquainted with what it is we're talking about. And so we'd make better decisions. And then also possibly look at a couple of other locations, because there are some alternatives out there to the way we've been doing things and some alternatives to some of the equipment that we use that long term could be more effective, more efficient, maybe save us some money. And before we go off and just spend large amounts of capital, we know we have expensive capital, but we want to spend it as wisely as possible. Not just, not just fixed capital, but operating capital going forward too. And that's part of the, part of the plan.
And right now, we, I mean, and we've talked to John and stuff like that. We need, right now, we need some short term, long, short term, right now, just, just to get us moving forward in something that we can do to make it safe, it's going to protect our water system and things like that, where you don't have to have that third shift. And Gulf America, I mean, it's going to be vital that we, we actually take care of that as quickly as we can. So if nothing happens, we'll, that will be the weekend of the sixteenth?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Everyone will do it the eighteenth.
Eighteenth, okay.
But that'd be happening because I got to start it.
Afternoon is fine.
Not problem. It's easier to get them down there, it's hard to get them here, I mean, get them here, but afternoon's better for them too.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Is there anything else that we need to bring up? Our reminders have already, all those have come and gone. The next regular city council meeting will be on the twenty-second, and that will be the week of Christmas, so. If not...
I got a quick.
All right.
I'm going to vote for the term when it's not on the... So we're just going to put it off.
Going to sit here till enough walkout, we break the court?
I got it on mine.
It's on the third, the last page, it's on the last page.
Well, all right, I'll vote for that.
Well, let's make that vote for that.
Second. Oh, no, you're first, I heard it first.
Old people, people always claim it.
You might see what it was, you got my ass and I got yours. You step right in the line.
I deserve it.
You two kids, now let's get along.
Call roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Krazin?
Yes, ma'am.
Daughery?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.